... And the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, could you take role, please? Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Planning and zoning administrator.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Roll call complete. Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens comments on agenda-related items. Seeing none consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered to be considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of the council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, consideration of a tax amendment to zoning ordinance, notification regarding next study session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Discussion. Heather, could you take role, please? Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Consideration of the annual audit committee report. The council audit committee is established by the section 23 of the city council guidelines. This section spells out the duties and responsibilities of the committee. As part of its responsibilities, the audit committee prepares a written report on how the committee discharged its duties and responsibilities. At this time, council could take action to accept the annual report of the council audit committee. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Heather, could you take role, please? Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Now, we'll have a presentation by Ken Talsma of Anderson Tagman on the June 30th, 2022 audits.
Mayor, Ken Talsma, who's the lead auditor and principal of Anderson Tagman, had some car difficulty. He had to drive all the way down from the U.P., so we set him up so he could present remotely.
So he'll be doing that tonight. Thank you.
Yep. Ken, can you hear us okay?
Yep, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep, I think we're ready. And Heather will drive the slides for you.
Okay. I'll do my opening spiel then. I'm all right to start?
Yep, go ahead.
All right, thank you. First, as always, I appreciate the city council having me here to present the audit results. So we've completed another year of June 30, 2022. I think overall, I think it was a pretty healthy year for the city. Things are continuing to stay kind of in the right trends and staying in the moving in the right directions. We'll start with the graphic package I have here. So we'll start with the balance sheet of the city, which kind of shows the cash equivalents that are unrestricted, which means they're able to be used for the day-to-day operations of the city. Then there's restricted, which usually is relating to debt covenants. For example, the USDA with them providing loans, they have various covenants to make sure that there's reserves to repay the debt, as well as due repair and replacement of the water service systems when you take debt out with them. You also have investments that are restricted and unrestricted. I think the largest piece out is the oil and gas fund. You can see those have changed during the year. I think most of that, we've had some unrealized gains with just the change in the stock market and value investments. And then you have also your receivables, you do from the governments for different things. And then the biggest part was your capital assets. Like most cities, you know, there's a lot, cities need a lot of infrastructure, streets, sidewalks, water, sewer systems. And then you also have deferred outflows, which relates to the pension obligation. If we can go to page two, please. We next have the obligations of the city, accounts payable being up a bit from last year, landing at about 2.1 million. And as we usually see, when you've got larger projects going on, like you do with the sewer fund, you'll have larger payables at the end of the year for because of those contracts and payments in progress. We also have your accrued liabilities for payroll and interest on debt. There's customer deposits, anytime they're required to have deposits set aside to participate in things like water and sewer and being customers of other things. Leases, we've seen that go to zero as we're kind of at a point where not, we've paid off the existing and haven't started the new ones at this point in time. Notes payable, 1.4 million, that's pretty comparable. On to page three. Continuing with the obligations of bonds payable took quite a jump, almost an equal amount to the capital assets, which we'd expect because a lot of the construction and process of the sewer fund has been backed by the USDA bonds to fund them. So they're kind of have risen in an equal amount while those have been going on. The pension liability, the next, one of the next big long-term liabilities, got a little bit better. It went down about, I think, 39,000 to land at about 5,622,601. So that is continued to stay in a pretty healthy place. I think it's around 70, 75% or something like that funded. The state likes it to be at least 60. So you're doing good in that respect that you're staying at a healthy level above what the state requires. Then you have vested employee benefits, 378,000. That's these crude sick and vacation time employees earn, that's payable upon them leaving. And then last is deferred inflows. So those are deferred outflows on the asset page and the inflows are kind of like deferred expenses and revenues relating to the pension obligation. Some of the changes that occur to the obligation don't immediately hit the bottom line every year. Some of them are what they call amortized over a period of time. Usually it relates to the service life of the employees. So it could be kind of held in these accounts or written off against or written against the obligation over a period of time, maybe two, three, five years. So it's, so these things are mostly determined by the actuarial company to kind of address the different assumption changes and, you know, interest changes and different thing factors on those things to kind of help provide a more accurate picture of your pension liability at the end of each year. Next, on page four, we have the equity of the city. Again, because of, like, one of the biggest assets you have is your capital assets with the infrastructure as well as different equipment and trucks and police cars. The net worth side or fund balance side is the investment capital assets. So that's, of course, going to be one of your bigger categories. Then you have restricted, meaning anytime you have money ending the year relating to grants or maybe millages or anything earmarked for a particular purpose, it's got to kind of stay in that bucket and be used for that moving forward or into the next year. It can't be just used for general items. It's got, it's restricted, meaning it's got to be used for a particular purpose. And then what's left is unrestricted, and that went to about 6.7 million. So that's still, still a pretty healthy place, even though it's down from about 9 million last year. And that can be used for the whatever day-to-day operations of the city. Page five, we have the different revenues of the city. One of the largest for most governments, tax property taxes, that got a little bit better. I think purely just on the strength of the taxable values, I don't think there were any new millage rates or millage inches added or increases in rates, just the values of kind of modest increases each year. So allows you to stay strong in the tax area. Then you also see what you get in the areas of licenses and permits. Federal grants was actually quite a bit better this year than last with the different federal grants like ARPA, kind of giving you a boost in that area. State sources staying pretty consistent, landing at about 2.2 million, up from 2.1 million last year. Different local sources, if any time there's any other governments or organizations in the area that also provide money to the city, that's a local source. Charges or the different fees that are charged by the city directly for services, like, for example, when you have water and sewer service, people pay for that service. It's a charge for the service. Investment earnings, sometimes losses. This year, we had the 1 million change in the oil and gas fund. Again, it's, you know, you say easily it's an unrealized loss that can change once any time the stock market rebounds or things get better. So it's, it's not, not a final, a final thing to happen, but it's, they require us to record the investments at market value. So that's always kind of a moving target, but, you know, the changes in stock market, which we've seen have moved quite a bit this year in directions up and down. Then interest earnings and rents, 37,000. Then other revenues, 116,000. Other revenues usually holds things like donations from people, could be insurance refunds, other small miscellaneous things kind of all caught up in this other category. Page six now, staying with the government funds. We have legislative, which is the city council, which with the change in the state's chart of accounts this year, which we, has finally taken place, we have the council legislative being blended in part of general government now. So in the next few years, we'll see that phase out and all, everything pretty much will be under general government. And that was about 1.7 million, and that's kind of covers a lot of the departments of the city, like treasurer, clerk, city manager, kind of elections, general, general operating things. Public safety is the next big category, which holds the police, kind of fire, some of those other safety functions. Public works, also a big department, 2.9 million. Wreck and culture, which holds things like libraries and parks, money for those, theater. Other expenditures, 161,000. That's staying pretty level each year. Then capital outlay, quite a bump this year. We have a lot going on with capital outlay, 2.5 million. Again, with all the different projects and equipment, things being bought, that gets expensed in that category to add capital assets to the city to provide services. Debt service did get reduced this year, went from about 1.8 million to 489,000. So that got better. We saw some debts paid down, at least in the government area. Next, on page seven, we have the revenues of the water and sewer fund, showing that they're staying pretty consistent. We ended at about 4.4 million for the revenues for just for charges. You also have interest and rents and other revenues, and then sometimes you get state grants. Like last year, we didn't have anything in state funding. This year, we went back to about 100,902 in state grants. So that kind of gave us a little bit of a bump for 2022. Page eight now shows the expenditures of the water and sewer funds, I mean, what you sell personnel, which is the wages and fringes for the people that work in the water sewer funds, contracted services, insurances, administration, supplies. Continuing on to page nine, I think the expenditures, communications, utilities, it's gone down a little bit over the last couple of years. Repair and maintenance bumped up this year from about 188,000 to 466,000. I think we had some repairs to the wells, I think, this year, which was a piece of that increase. Depreciation on the system, it's a big expenditure, which is depreciation, again, is always a tool to allocate the cost of the capital assets. Doesn't necessarily mean it's cash being spent, but it's a tool to allocate the useful life of these capital assets over their, over their lives. Like the water sewer systems, maybe it could be 40 years, trucks could be seven to 10 years. So it's, it's just an accounting principle that helps, helps allocate expenses in the, in the periods that they belong. You have miscellaneous expenses and interest expense on the debt, landing at about 497,000. Page 10, I believe, has the general funds fund balance. So it is a kind of a good measure of health. It's always important to maintain a healthy fund balance. You've had increases the last three years. You've gotten up to about 2.7 million, almost 2.8 million in fund balance. And we always say that there's, you know, there's not like a ceiling as far as fund out, but there is a floor. The government finance officers always recommend, don't, don't go below 10 to 15% of your next year's budgeted expenditures and transfers out to other funds. So it kind of, don't go below that, and that'll keep you in a safe place. And then, you know, with fund balance, it's always kind of helpful to make sure that, you know, you're, you're keeping that to the levels you need in case you're saving up for any, you know, additional projects or, or any other needs that come along, kind of, or grant matches and those things. So you got to have money saved up when those, when those different things come along so you can take advantage of those projects or grants. So I think your fund balance is, you know, in a pretty good place for the end of this year. One thing I always mention, if you have the reverse trend where your fund balance goes down three years in a row, then the state gets all excited and starts writing letters saying that they're concerned, they're worried about you, and, and, you know, do you have any plans to try to reverse the trend? But I think in this case, it's, it's good that you're, you're getting better each year, so you won't have to deal with that issue. I think that's the graphs. Any questions on anything of the, of the numbers of the finances? Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look at the report, too. We can talk about any questions with that as well.
I don't think we have any questions.
I know we met with the audit committee, too, and really had a pretty thorough review of everything in the report and spent time there, too, so.
Okay. Thank you, Ken.
Thanks, Ken. Appreciate it.
Right, thanks. I guess in closing, I would just add that we appreciate everybody's work at the city for pulling all the information together. You know, there's a lot of random sampling we do with test transactions and pulling agreements and documents, invoices, and backup for different revenues and looking at things and analysis. And of course, we ask millions of questions and make sure everything's explained, you know, I guess to our satisfaction, it makes sense. So we appreciate everybody working with us and, you know, being always, is always very timely and getting everything done. Like I say, everything is always, you know, very good order at the City of Manistee, and we appreciate everybody's hard work and enjoy working with the city, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Consideration of accepting a grant award for park improvements. The city has been working with Parks Commission to identify various park needs. A grant application was submitted to Manistee's Community Foundation's Minger Fund. The total project has been budgeted at 171,538 with 20,000 of in-kind services, 54,000 cash match and 97.5 in grant proceeds. The in-kind services will be provided by the DPW and volunteers for construction installation of the equipment. The cash match would be provided for, from Parks Capital Outlay Refuge Fund and a donation from the Senior Softball League. The community foundation has awarded the grant request. At this time, council could take action to accept the 97,500 grant from the Manistee Community Foundation and authorize the city manager to sign the grant, grant agreement on behalf of the city. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. That park is leased, is that correct? Or do we own that property outright?
Morton Park?
Yeah.
So it is leased. It's a 50-year lease. There's 22 years left on it.
Okay.
And we, one of the requirements of the community foundation was that we get a letter from them stating that they'll give us ample time to, if they do invest in the park with the equipment, that they won't, I think it was like a 60-day out clause, but they're going to provide a sufficient time to remove the equipment if needed. But they don't foresee acting on that out clause.
Okay. I have a question. Who wrote the grant?
So it was a combination of Jeff McCula and Laney from the Parks Commission. We appreciate that. And then it was kind of, I spoke with the MRA. We had various different meetings with different groups, the foundation. So it was kind of a collaborative effort, but we really appreciate the Parks Commission and Jeff stepping up to, we had kind of a tight deadline and even council, we put the approval on a study session night, if you remember, to get this through. So we hustled to get this one in, and I appreciate everyone's efforts.
Good job. Thanks. Anybody else?
I think it's awesome. I'm really happy that that happened. Thank you, everybody who took the time to make it, make it happen.
Heather, could you take role, please? Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. Consideration of establishing new rates and entering into five-year lease agreements for riverfront leases on December 31, 2022. The current five-year riverfront leases will expire. Staff has reviewed the rates and determined the fees for renewal. The city attorney has drafted up updated five-year leases with the new rates that will run from January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2027. At this time, council could take action to establish rates for and enter into five-year riverfront leases and further authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Consideration of establishing new rates and entering into five-year lease agreements for riverfront leases on December 31, 2022. The current five-year riverfront leases will expire. Staff has reviewed the rates and determined the fees for renewal. The city attorney has drafted up updated five-year leases with the new rates that will run from January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2027. At this time, council could take action to establish rates for and enter into five-year riverfront leases and further authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Any discussion?
How much are these leases going up? Anybody have an idea?
Councilmember Grabowski, the five-year leases are going up 0% the first year and then 3% each of the next four years. And that's fairly typical for what the rate increases have been in the past. We kind of freeze it for that first year, and then we'll increase it after that.
What is the normal price of a lease?
I can tell you what the front foot rate is. I'd have to look it up. So it just, it just went up by that inflationary factor of the 0 and then 3%. When Denise Blakesley, previous community development director, was here prior to the last round of leases, they did a, an exercise with the assessor to establish kind of in a detailed fashion what the rates are. So we've just adjusted those for inflation. And the way the process goes from now is if this is approved tonight, then those leases will get sent to the property owners, they'll execute them, send them back for our execution, and we'll record them. And that's how we've done it in the past.
I have a question. On that, kind of piggybacking on the rate increase, so I'm seeing in some of them where it gives the breakdown from the 2023 through 2027, but on the first two, I'm not seeing that. So is that the amount that's listed?
It may be that those are dollar leases, Councilmember Pratt. So some of these property owners gave us easements for the Riverwalk, and in return, we allow them to put a doc out, and it's a $1. Other ones, the city owns the property, and those are the ones that have the higher rates on them.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure the dollar amount.
Yep.
Or the $1 was correct.
It is correct. Thank you. Any other questions?
Heather, could you take role, please? Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Motion approved. Consideration of a street vacation request. A street vacation request was received from the owner of the property at 114 Pine Street, parcel number 515134971307 for the portion of the second street which abuts to his property. The planning commission held a public hearing and considered the request at their November 3, 2022 meeting. The planning commission recommends approval of this request by council. At this time, council could take action to approve the street vacation request for the portion of the second street which abuts 114 Pine Street. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Can we get more information? So they're going to vacate that, but what's going to happen with that portion of that property?
Good evening, everyone. So with a street vacation request, it is just what it sounds. That property that's highlighted with the red will be to the, to that property owner to the north at 114 Pine. So you'll see, if this was approved, you would see those parcel lines just continue and encompass that red area.
Okay. I assume that, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Anybody else? Heather, could you take role, please?
Could I ask that you repeat that motion and second? Who motioned and who seconded on that?
I was the one who made it.
You motioned and?
My second. Thank you. Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Okay. At this time, Mr. John Helge will report on the activities of the tree commission.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and city council members. It's my pleasure to be representing the, your tree commission. It's my real honor to be representing them as the chairperson. I'd like to bring you up to date in the next five minutes, a little bit, on what we've been doing as it relates to the tree commission activities in 2022, and share with you how that, that's working. So if I can figure out how to make this thing work.
Press the down arrow.
Pardon?
The down arrow.
Down. All right. Our tree commission, what you've got in the blue in front of you is our, basically, our action, what we're entitled to do for the city. We meet on the second Monday of every month, and they're in the months of April through October. We meet right here in the city council chambers, and the meetings are recorded, and then they're put up on our public, our PEG system for any of the residents to view at any time. I'd like to highlight who our members are. We have two new members on the commission who served this last year, Peter Laram and Dennis Otto. They both came on to the commission new, and we have two vacant seats. And the reason we have two vacant seats is we lost two members due to relocation, and we're looking for members to fill those, those positions right now. And obviously, if you know of anyone who's interested in helping us put forward our urban forest strategy for the city of Manistee, we'd appreciate you directing them to us and let us talk to them about how they can help. The urban forest strategy here, just, I just want you to have this little graph to let you know all of the things that we're working on. We're not just working on trees, we're working on vegetation and everything else that goes along with it. And we have to understand, there's a lot of things that enter into the, the whole concept. And I think we've made some great progress in the last year, bringing the urban forest concept to the city of Manistee. I'd like to share with you now some of our goals from 2022, and these are the five key, key points that we worked on during this year. And again, I think we've made good progress towards these goals, and I want to share our progress with you at this time. We were very fortunate to be introduced to Dr. Josh Shields, who works for the Manistee Conservation District, and he has voluntarily offered to work with us as our arborist, as our consulting arborist. He is a PhD from my alma mater, Michigan Technological University, and he is just really sharp and really doing a great job. Our trim for view procedure, we have submitted a draft procedure to the city manager, and the issues that some citizens have brought up about trimming Manistee public trees to improve their view, whether that view is of the lake, of the river, of Manistee Lake, bottom line is, we have a procedure in place now, being reviewed, which will be brought to you once that review is done, but we believe that this is a procedure that will address to everyone's satisfaction, the trim-for-view challenges that we've had. Planting more trees than we're, than we're removed. In 2022, we removed 25 trees and we planted 42, not bad, but you're going to see in a few minutes, we've got a long way to go, and we're beginning a tree inventory process. We've been able to coordinate with the Department of Public Works and our city engineers to utilize your GIS mapping system and smartphones to, over the next three-plus years, we hope to be able to categorize, to audit, to inventory every tree on public land in the city of Manistee. We'll know what the species is, we'll know how large it is, we'll know the condition of it, and we'll be able to track that, not, not only immediately, but into the future, so as they are cut, trimmed, removed, replanted, we'll be updating that. But this, I think, is a, is a good project, I'm excited that the Manistee High School students are engaged in this, they're going to be working with us over the next three years, and again, this is a really good project, I think, for the city. Public relations and citizen involvement, we had a campaign last year, it ran through April and May and June, called Manistee Plant a Tree, you might have seen some of the ads in the paper, that's very important, and it went very well, I've got a slide coming up here that'll show you a little bit about that. And again, I mentioned already, all our meetings are on video, we want to have an open, transparent operation, and we welcome public comments and public participation in our meetings. Last but not least, we got to replace these two members that we lost due to relocation, and we're going to work on that here early, so we can hit the ground running in April of 2023 with a full cadre of folks on the commission. The DPW folks have been hard at work, in fact, today, if you went on Bryant Avenue, you saw them in, at work, they were trimming trees that had trim requests in from the citizens, doing a great job, doing it safely, doing a, you know, just an outstanding job, but they're cutting a lot down. Here's where we are, folks, through 2020, you know, we removed 407 trees, in 2021, we kind of went crazy and removed 125, they needed to come down, these are trees that are either diseased or creating some type of a safety issue for the city workers or the public. We're getting better now, in 2022, again, like I said, we planted 42 new trees, and we only removed 25, but as you can see here, we've removed over 500 trees, and we've only planted about 252, so, 269 trees, we've got a long way to go, and we, we've got to do this to keep the city green, because trees will have a useful life, sadly, we have to remove some, some large trees, but again, when we plant these new trees, we're, you're planting a tree not for today, but for the future. This is just a little bit of background on the Manistee Plant a Tree program, this was up on our website, it got, obviously, it got good press and good use, with 42 trees, each that the citizens bought, they spent $50 apiece, they were planted and provided with watering bags to make sure that they're able to take root safely, and again, I think you're going to see some beautiful trees along our public right-of-ways in the next few years. But again, our vision is for a resilient urban forest here in the city of Manistee, and again, this is what your commission is working on. What do we need from you, what do we need from the city to succeed? Obviously, we want to recruit these two additional members, we need your support for the audit, we're getting that, I can tell you, Jeff Mickel, the DPW, the city engineers are working with us very well to do this audit, we need your approval for the trim-for-view policy, as soon as you can get it from the city manager and the city attorney. We're going to continue to focus on community engagement and public relations for tree plantings, we did a good job starting next, last year, we're going to do even better this year, and last but not least, the continued support from the Manistee City Department of Public Works, I can't say enough about how these guys work, they work hard, they work safe, and I'm very proud of the work that they do. At this time, that completes my presentation to you, are there any questions?
I have a question, you mentioned in one of your first slides that you, when you had the round circle.
Yep.
I saw in one of the columns you had rooftops.
Yep.
What do you, what are you going to do with looking at that topic?
Well, again, most rooftops are private, okay, as a Tree Commission, we don't have much to say about that, but if we have rooftops on publicly-owned buildings that would lend themselves to becoming a green space, I think that would be wonderful, so.
The only reason I bring this up is there are a number of buildings that have flat roofs, and I'm thinking it would be great if we could establish a policy to encourage the use of green space on top of those buildings, I think there might be, I would assume, because everybody's interested in environmental affairs, that there should be some grants available for things of that nature, and it might be even something consumers would be interested in, if it saves any energy, so, that's why I asked the question.
I, I just, again, I would question, you know, public funds going to private property, that may be a challenge, but again, promoting that within the city, I think, is a great idea, you know, anything we can do to increase green space, the work that you've done, the city has done, for example, with Blight, you know, you're making great progress there, you know, in interacting with public and private landowners, so again, that's the type of thing, but again, as a Tree Commission, we really can't help much there with.
Okay, that's why I asked the question when I was on there.
I wish, I wish we could do more, but again, promoting it, I think it's a great idea. Another question?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, I love that you're involving the Manistee High School students, can you tell me what exactly will they be doing in relationship to that project?
Well, the, the project using the GIS system, first and foremost is, we're going to have a, a direct password into the GIS system to specifically go to, you know, an area that's set up for the tree audits, and they'll be able to use their cell phones, and they'll be able to access that and use the GPS capability of their cellphone to know exactly where on the earth that, that tree is, they'll be able to take a picture of it, they'll be able to upload the information right on their cellphone, and it's done.
So that's what they're going to do for you, help you get the inventory put in?
Right.
Very cool, I love that.
And we're seeing, we're, we're going to get help, again, from the environmental science folks, from, you know, any, anybody at the school that's interested, but the, the science teachers are all engaged on, on board with us.
Nice.
Would they be able to do their own?
I'm sorry?
Would a homeowner be able to do their own, or they have to be through your system?
We, we, we want to be careful about how many folks we give the password to on the, for the inventory, again, for the GIS system, maintaining that, so, probably not, okay?
I have two, did I just cut you off?
That's okay, I'll ask after you.
I have two questions, I can't go back on the slides, but I think it would, I don't know if it was 2020 or 2021 that you didn't plant any, yeah?
Is that one?
2022, 2021, how come you didn't plant any trees?
Pardon me?
In 2021?
Yes.
You didn't plant any trees?
We did not.
Okay, why?
Well, COVID.
Okay, well, I was thinking that would be 2020, but okay, okay.
COVID, and again, 2021 was our first full year with a, with a renewed vitality on the commission, if you will.
Okay.
So we just were trying to figure out how we can get this done, but there was just a lot on our plate that year with the COVID situation, a lot on the DPW's plate.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot of it was contractor availability.
Okay. Okay, and then my next question, I'm assuming that some of you guys, like, drive around and look at areas and stuff, if you notice, like, trees in a, in a homeowner's yard that's, like, diseased or dead, do you let them know?
Well, to be honest with you, no, we're not, we're not going to be the tree police, if you will.
Well, I'm just wondering if it would be, because I would have no clue whatsoever if the tree was dead.
I would say, we, we have responded to homeowners that have requested us to come out and look at trees, that, you know, the first question they have is this on public property, and then we answer that question, if it's not, we'll at least let them know, yes, that tree is diseased, yes, that tree has reached the end of its life cycle, yes, that tree should come down, but sorry, you're going to have to pay for that.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just wondering if it would, if it would be kind of beneficial if, if you seed a tree that needed to come down, just like, send them a letter and be like, hey, we noticed that your tree's diseased, and then put that flyer in for them to purchase it, I mean, because they're already going to spend a couple of grand to take down the tree, what's 50 bucks?
Just understand, too, though, that the purchasing of the trees that we're doing, we're subsidizing those, the homeowner pays $50.
Right.
But the actual cost of planting, and by the way, the, the tree is planted, bought, planted, and everything would be in the neighborhood of $3 to $350.
Okay.
So the city is subsidizing, you know, those trees that were, those 42 trees that we planted this past year, the city subsidizes those.
Okay.
So those plant a tree, they're, somebody pays $50, but the city puts them in somewhere, or does the person who pays the $50 say where they want it, or how does that work?
Yes, the, the person that pays the $50, part of the process, I'll see if I can get back to that, basically, they stake out where they want it, they put a stake in the ground, literally a stake in the ground, and they say, this is where I want the tree, then they notify the DPW.
Okay.
And the DPW then arranges, number one, we've got to make sure that we can safely dig there, so they do the, you know, looking for the water lines, the electrical, underground, all that stuff, and then the contractor who's providing the tree, they are the ones that dig the hole, plant the tree, stake it out, put the water bag on, and as you can see in the, in these pictures, they do it, in my opinion, do a great job, they're beautifully planted, they're well-positioned, and I wouldn't want to have to do that job.
My last question for you, you said you have two vacant positions on your commission, what, like, is there something specific you're looking for, or, I mean, because I'll start talking to people, but I don't know for sure what you?
Really, no, we're looking for people that are, that have an interest in preserving the green space in this city.
Okay.
That are interested in getting engaged with creating and maintaining a sustainable urban forest, and that's, that's the only requirement we have, that they just be willing to spend some of their time working and thinking about this.
I have two quick questions.
Yes.
First, I want to thank you and your commission, it sounds like you guys are doing a great job and really focusing on the future, so my question is, as a resident, if you didn't have a place to plant a tree on your property, could you adopt a tree or purchase a, plant a tree for it to be purchased somewhere in city property, does the city have anywhere that they're looking for trees, whether it be at parks or anything like that, could a resident make a donation for that?
You know, that is, that's a great question, and it's something that we've certainly considered, people have offered.
Yep.
And they, you know, I guess, Jeff, you have planted some in the parks?
I haven't been asked that question, but I would say the answer is yes, we do have Morton Park, part of that master plan is to add some trees, we did have an extra two trees as part of this program this year, and placed those in Morton Park, but there's plans to do more of that, and certainly in other places in the city park system, so I would say, yeah.
Oh, I think that'd be a great opportunity, if we can take advantage of it, and then the second thing, you mentioned that there's potentially a new trim, trim-a-tree policy or trim-for?
Trim-for-view.
Is there currently a policy on trimming trees, and would that be a change?
Yes.
And then, if we're changing that, when, or we may be suspecting to see a draft of that policy?
So the city attorney and I are reviewing it now, so probably in the next month or two.
Okay.
There is a procedure now, but it's really focused on safety.
Right.
And the condition of the tree.
So this would be for the purpose of a view rather than the safety or the condition?
Right.
Okay, so it might just be more like trim a limb rather than like take a tree completely out?
Right.
Okay.
When you, when you do the inventory, you'll find that there are trees that say they don't meet your current needs, willows and pine trees in the parkway.
Yep.
Is there going to be a policy where you'll actually take those down and replace those with the trees that we want there, or we'll, a lot of those will just hang on the sidewalk, how's that going to happen?
Well, certainly, you know, if we've got trees that are, that are not appropriate for the position they're in, you know, they'll become, create a problem with, with safety for the view of an intersection, for example, they create a problem, one of the biggest problems that Jeff is telling us that they, they suffer is snow plowing, you know, getting in the way that the snow plows, and so again, we're being very careful, when you look at the trees that we're offering, as the plant a tree issue, we're making sure that those are appropriate trees, number one, they're appropriate for this, you know, this environment here in Manistee, Michigan, and that they also won't grow too high or too wide.
The ones that exist, there be an effort to get rid of those?
Again, we're not going to, we're not going to be in a hurry to get rid of trees that may be inappropriate unless they are creating a problem right now for safety or
Okay.
operations, okay?
I think on some of them, John, I see on your picture up on the right there, they have, you recommend to people not to plant them too close to the road, because, like you said, you got water lines and all that, I see some of those trees are really close to the sidewalks that are, you know?
And, and again, we've, we've had, you know, removal requests, you know, from folks saying, the sidewalk in front of my house is, you know, up for that, and I just want to go on record, we're, we're not necessarily going to remove a tree because it's creating a problem with the sidewalk, you know, on, on Cedar Street, the Cedar Street and Fourth Street intersection there, there was a tree that was very severely impacting the sidewalk in the city, DPW did a great job, in my opinion, trim, you know, actually trimming that tree at the trunk level and replacing the sidewalk, and those are the kind of things that we'll look for in the future, but again, the cost of that, Jeff, that may have to be, you know, taken on by the homeowner, because again, the sidewalk in front of your house is a responsibility of the homeowner. Anything else? Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Helge.
Citizens comment, this is an opportunity for citizens and attendants to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement, letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Yes.
Hi, those of you that don't know me, I'm Karen Mao on the Parks Commission, and I'm here on behalf of the Parks Commission to invite all of you on the City Council and the entire public, we'd love to see the room packed on Thursday evening, January the 19th at 6:00 PM, right after our Parks Commission meeting, Mark Fetter is going to be giving a talk on the history of the Manistee City Park, so we're excited, he's agreed to do this for us, it should be recorded, I believe, we're hoping, so that it can be available to the public who are not able to attend, and we have invitations for all of you, and we just hope to see everyone, I mean, we'd love to see the room filled just with people excited about our parks, so, that's it.
Thank you.
Let me just pass them down. There you go, thank you.
One thing I was going to say, Liz Lasky from the Parks, a couple positives tonight, one was the Minga grant, and I love that the city and the parks, everybody works together, the second thing is the Tree Commission, that's collaboration between many different entities, and I think I love seeing things, the collaboration and the work together, because it's, everybody does have the common goal. One suggestion I was going to, came up with when you were talking, John, was, we kind of have enough benches, and people love making memorials, and an honorarium, in honor of or a memory, a tree might be, for $50, you might get some trees, and like Morton Parks has two trees currently, and it's probably five acres down there, some trees would be wonderful there, and I don't think we need to put a brass plaque on every tree, but maybe post it somewhere in City Hall or in the library, and somewhere acknowledge it that the tree memorials for the year were enlisted, but for $50, that would be a pretty decent memorial that could really improve the city, so just a thought, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Alyssa Lasky, I swooped in at the last minute here, so I just want to take a minute to actually thank Councilman Pratt, so, right, right before Christmas, Christmas break that we all, a lot of us had the opportunity to go on and hopefully enjoy and disconnect the DPW sidewalk plows nearby, which is awesome, I like to see that, so long as that's a service offered, unfortunately, there, there are a lot of streets or sidewalks in Manistee that probably aren't the, the width- are a lot of streets or sidewalks in Manistee that probably aren't the, the width of, of code, sidewalk code today, if it were to be installed net new. Because I'm sure the, the sidewalk plow was ordered to be in compliance with code today. But what that means is the sidewalk plow goes by and people's lawns get ripped up. And, uh, on Fourth Street, what we saw was several, several spots where there was just a dump of sod, uh, that probably the plow ripped up, dropped in the middle of the sidewalk, and especially right before Christmas, where a lot, there's lots of people going out and walking, whatever the case may be, just dumps of sod all, all along Fourth Street. So, um, I was thankful for the opportunity to reach out to Councilman Pratt. He cares, that's clear, uh, to all of us. And, um, folks were off of, on Christmas break by then, and what he did, which I didn't expect, but I thank you, was come down with a shovel and shovel that crap off the sidewalk just so our town would look nice, so that we didn't have this dump of sod laying in the middle of the sidewalk, which I, so I appreciate, thank you. Um, the other thing, I guess, so long as, as I understand it, uh, the City Council is a group that reviews and ultimately sets policy or expectations that the City Manager Office is responsible for enforcing. Something that we may want to consider, because I know Jeff's squad is stretched really, really thin, is, um, I'd ask maybe that we look into, what would it, and actually, Mr. Helge just said, citizens, uh, should be responsible for the sidewalk in front of their house. There are many, 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 many cities all across Michigan, probably the whole U.S., where in fact, part of being responsible for the sidewalk in front of your house means that you are also responsible for shoveling, or plowing, or paying some kind of service to plow in front of your house. Uh, I lived downstate for many years, our city manager lived downstate for many years, and my, the town where I lived, um, I'm out of breath, I ran up the stairs to make it in time. Uh, the town where I lived, there were many small businesses that had opportunities to sprout up, and the way it worked in my neighborhood is if enough people pitched in twenty-five bucks, there was a small business that would come by once a week and plow, uh, which is many, many, many more times than ultimately throughout the winter than naturally, understandably, DPW was able to come by. Uh, so that's something, so long as we're on topic, and this was not planned, of citizens being responsible for the sidewalk in front of their house, that's something maybe I'd ask the council to consider for future years. Thank you.
Thank you. I was just waiting to see if you were gonna move. Okay. Mr. Campbell?
Um, just a couple of updates. Uh, we did have a leak of the fire suppression system, uh, as everyone probably saw coming up the stairs, um, Christmas morning, we were formed, it was a pipe break. Once the fire department was alerted, they came down, were able to turn it off, but, um, significant damage was done, drywall, ceilings, um, also the elevator. So we're waiting on two parts for the elevator. I don't have an ETA for them yet, but, um, we're gonna look at how we can prevent this in the future. Um, that goes to temp alarms, I think we had to install, I was told, in the Marina Building for things like this. The blizzard coming out of the west, we have a vent, and there's kind of some hollow areas in the building that need, um, we need to make sure that they get some warm air, especially during these storms. So, um, we're gonna be kind of fixing up. We've been working with the insurance. We kind of have an ad hoc group of, um, staff kind of monitoring this, making sure it moves forward. So, um, be patient with us, we're gonna try to get that fixed and make sure it doesn't happen again. Um, yep. And I think, I think, uh, Councilman Pratt, he did notify, um, us about that sod, and he did clean it up. We could commit to four A.M. the next day. Um, it looks like there was some, there was a tree branch, talking with Jeff, that employee was trying to get around, did go onto the sod, um, but backed up. It shouldn't have been left that way, so that was addressed. But, um, so an update on that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Pratt?
Um, well, I just wanted to, uh, touch base on the sidewalks. I, I understand I reached out about Fourth Street, but now that the snow has melted unexpectedly, um, it, it's pretty clear that it's an issue all over town. I mean, you can go out for a walk, and there's some pretty big rivets in people's lawns. So personally, and I sent an email about it, um, this afternoon, I, I'd kind of like to see us as a city, maybe clean that up in the spring for citizens. I mean, I hire my driveway and walks to be plowed, and I wouldn't accept that from the person I hire. So I, I feel bad, because we have residents that are elderly, or they have health conditions where they probably shouldn't be out shoveling. So I think leaving that isn't acceptable, in my opinion. So whether, whether we're gonna reinforce the ordinance, if the ordinance is, if the homeowner's responsible, then I think we have to educate the public on that and kind of go back to that. But I think there's a mixture, because some people expect that the city's gonna come around with the plow, and some people think that they're, it's their responsibility. So I think somehow we have to figure that out.
And that is the ordinance, that they're supposed to be responsible for it. But talking with Jeff, it seems like it's become expected, but, yeah, I think.
Um, I was wondering if we had an update. I had asked previously about possibly having like a DPW meeting open to the public, kind of an educational opportunity for them to let citizens know what they do. Citizens could ask questions or concerns. Um, I didn't know if that was a possibility.
Yeah, I guess we'd have to talk about what exactly that would look like, and what staff would have to be there. Would it be a couple hours? Would it be a half a day? And, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I just think like that might be a valuable venue for like the sidewalk thing to be discussed. Do you know what I mean? Or hear citizens' concerns on that. Um, speaking on that day, though, communication was kind of an issue, and, and I get that. And it's a little concerning. I've sat on various committees and worked in education for a number of years. It's a little concerning, and I've asked this before, what our communication plan is as a city. Um, I'm kind of shocked to find out we don't really have something set in stone that like if a citizen calls within forty-eight hours, we're gonna return their call. I mean, that's typically in a contract. Every employee that I've ever employed for a contract, it's stated what the communication expectation is. So I'm not sure what that is, and I, and I emailed you about, um, whether, I, I had some concerns on whether the building was open, because I had called and didn't get the calls back. So maybe a sign, an open and close sign. I think we could do something tasteful. I don't think it has to look tacky, but something that, you know, if you're driving by, you can see if we're open or closed, because the lights were off. Um, so I, I guess I'm just wondering about that. And then, um, I know in the past, um, Councilmember Lundberg had brought up the, um, idea of like compliments and complaints and how that could be done online. And I'm just wondering if we could get an update on how often that's being used, because I probably like anybody else sitting up here right now, if you're out and about in public. I mean, a trip to the grocery store, even if you think it's gonna be quick fifteen minutes, is turning into forty-five, because you're getting stopped. And people are, people have valid concerns. And I'm gonna be honest, I'm hearing from a lot of citizens that when I say contact the city, they're like, I've done it, and I'm not getting a response. So I, I just, I think we have to find a way to work with the public. I, I don't think it's negative, but I think we have to be willing to hear some of the negative and work, and how can we improve that? Nothing's perfect. But these people pay tax dollars, they pay our salaries, we're elected by them, we have to work for them. And, and that's my biggest concern. And I'm gonna end on two things. I had previously asked for job descriptions. Um, I was a little concerned that job descriptions that I had asked for, the last time they were updated was two thousand and eighteen, and that was one job description. And all the other ones had previously been updated in two thousand and seventeen, and it looked like a lot of copying and pasting. I, I feel like job descriptions are like a living document. They should be ongoing, and they should be updated annually. I, I mean, I don't think any of us that are currently working have worked a job since two thousand and seventeen, and are probably still doing that job exactly like we did it in two thousand and seventeen. So I'm a little worried about that, and I'm also wondering if we have a Facebook policy. Because we're public servants, and like I, I view myself as a education educator, previously, and administrator now. I work for the public. Whether, I don't believe in social media, I don't do that personally, but whether I did or didn't, I understand that, you know, we can't control that freedom of speech, things like that. But I have a hard time when a city employee is going on Facebook saying, like, I'm clearing the roads today, and complaining about that, when that's, that's their job. Like, you get hired for a job, and there's good and bad things about a job, but I don't go rant about the negative on my job. And, and I'm just gonna be honest, I don't know what the policy is on that, and maybe that's all occurring outside of work hours, and we can't do anything on that. But some of the pictures that this individual posted that was sent to me by another citizen, looks like it's on the job site, because they're actually taking pictures saying, this is what I'm doing today. And maybe that's on their break, but maybe it's not. And, and I just, I, I worry about the professionalism of that and what message that's sending to the citizens, because, again, I might get approached at the grocery store, and I'm not planning on that, but I'm not like, hey, I'm not on work time. I mean, you, you have to make adjustments. So I, I feel like there's room for improvement on that.
And I didn't see that particular post, though, but I do know that they work sixty straight hours, uh, plowing over the holiday weekend, and I really appreciate their work to get the roads cleared during the blizzard.
Mr. Rouski?
Well, I have, you know, on this plowing the city streets, most of you were down the council when we discussed this years ago. If you remember, Jeff, we talked about, should the citizen have to clean their sidewalk? A lot of them go to Florida, a lot of them are too old. I mean, you know, I mean, I think you made the mention, well, maybe they should hire somebody back then. And I don't know if we ever came to a consensus, how, how to get these sidewalks cleaned. It's, it's been a mess for years.
I'm not sure how, how many years ago we had that discussion at council level, maybe five years ago or so, six, something like that. Um, the ordinance clearly states that the adjoining property owner is responsible for all maintenance of the sidewalks. I, I there's probably a legal definition of maintenance, but it could be this, the snow removal, it could be tri, you know, edging. Um, but it certainly implies that if the sidewalk is in disrepair, that, that the adjoining property owner is responsible for that. Um, and I think we were going through, um, the contract with the DDA at the time, because we had to change some language in the ordinance that specifically, specifically addressed the sidewalks downtown and made it the store owner's responsibility. And, um, and so that was a surprise to me, um, because the DPW partially does that work, but not completely does that work. So we're kind of in between it. And, and I even had a conversation with the city manager today. We don't enforce the ordinance the way it's written. Nobody's held accountable for maintaining or upgrading the sidewalks. The city has a program each year, and right now, we're doing trip hazards, where we, we hire a company to bevel the concrete, um, if the trip hazard's less than two inches. And, you know, we're getting two to three hundred of those done a year. And then we follow that crew, and we do removal and replacements. Um, and we do that with, with street funds. Um, now, our Act Fifty-One funding from the state of Michigan requires us to spend a portion of that money on sidewalks, so that's very justifiable. And we have changed from going all around the city, and we're kind of moving through neighborhoods and trying to be as efficient and spend that money the best that we can. Um, as far as the snow blowing, um, I actually went and we physically measured the equipment. Sidewalks are typically sixty inches or five feet wide. Um, there's quite a few on the north side that are narrower than that. But we're aware of where those are at, and we try to stay away from them. So right now, when we have the time, um, we, we have two different snow blowers that we can use. Um, and we try to get the major streets, and we try to get around the schools. And then, if time allows, where we've got wonderful weather like this, they may branch out into other areas, um, but there's no pattern to that. And so there's some portions of the city that may never see, uh, the plow at all during the wintertime. Um, this time of year, there, there's no frost in the ground. So when the guys were out, you've got metal edges, and you've got soft soil, the metal's gonna win every time. Um, and then it's not just the sidewalks, it's the edges of the streets and so forth. So, um, we keep a list throughout the winter, and if people call in and need assistance with us cleaning that up in the spring, we go back with topsoil, and, and we will see that in the spring. But I, I'm kind of in agreement with you. We've got a local law, says one thing, and we don't adhere to that, and we kind of piecemeal it with Public Works, but once we take a little piece of that, we own the whole thing. And so as far as the community is concerned, we're responsible for all of it, right? Because that's, that's what they see. So we either need to, I think, amend that ordinance, or, like Mr. Pratt said, or, or get that word out, what it actually is and what people are responsible for.
Any else?
Good.
Mr. Bachman?
All good, thank you, ma'am.
I want to make a comment about the sidewalks, because this is, this will be my public service announcement. Um, the, the senior center, uh, has a list of people that will shovel your sidewalks. So if you're a senior, or you have a, a problem, a handicap or a disability of some kind, and you need some help, I would call a senior center. They have a list of people who will do it for you. So let's try to get them involved more. Thank you.
That's great. Um, I just wanted to, first off, thank, um, Ed and your crew for the audit, the work with the audit. I know that's a lot of work, and, um, it looks like we're being very fiscally sound at the moment, and I'm, I'm so grateful for all the work you guys did. So I just wanted to put that out there. Um, and then I have a question brought to my attention, and I do not know the answer, so I'm gonna ask it here, so hopefully it helps somebody else, too. How do we dispose of Christmas lights that are no longer working? What's, what's our, how do we do that? I know you're not supposed to put them in the trash. I don't know what you're supposed to do with them. I don't know, who knows?
I think you could put them in the trash, but what type of lights are they? There's LED lights, or?
I don't know, just whatever kind of Christmas lights, string of Christmas lights that aren't working. It actually said something in the paper about, don't put them in the trash. And then it didn't say where to put them, so I don't know for sure if there is a...
I don't know, Jeff, do you have any?
I, I haven't, I've never heard, don't put them in the trash, so...
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can, uh, contact Republic and see if they have any...
Any, yeah, any...
Prohibitions or suggestions on that.
Okay.
And then we can get back with you.
All right.
But while you're on that, the Public Works will be going around and picking up Christmas trees. If you've got a natural tree that, that you need to put out along the street, not the fake ones. But we, we will come around and pick those up and chip those up.
Okay.
The next month.
So, well, once we find out, we'll post on Facebook, if we find out where to put, where to put those Christmas lights.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I got a couple of questions for you, Jeff. Um, the, the Christmas trees that are downtown, um, how do we go about, like, getting different ornaments next year? Like, upping it up so it looks...
So we had problems with the strings on the big tree, um, with just strings that were going out. So we're, we've been, we're trying to make it better and better each year. But, um, in, in, both Josh and I sit on the Sleigh Bell Committee, and a lot of those conversations have been, we want it to be beautiful, but it's Victorian, we don't want to go too far. And so we've kind of tried to make it elegant and nice. Um, actually, when we were bringing the tree down to River Street this year, we got, the string got snagged on a branch, and it, and snapped it. So we had, Top Line was there at the time and was able to splice it, but every time we got moisture or rain, we had stuff that went out, and then we went and put more on. So to answer your question, we're trying to, um, we're trying to find a good source and a good solution for the lighting. The small tree, um, last year, they had a local business that volunteered to decorate that, and, um, the decorations that they used ended up blowing off and kind of creating a mess. So the, the committee decided not to decorate it this year, and just kind of leave it natural and leave it down at the East End.
Okay. So do we always put the tree? Have you always put the tree where it is now? I, I mean, I've only lived here...
The big one or the small one?
Yes, the big one.
The big one, yes.
Okay. So I seen in, I wanna, I wanna say it's Traverse City, they have, they have the same thing, they put their tree the same place every year, and what they did was they did like a false manhole.
Mm-hmm.
Put the tree in there, so they don't ever have an issue with it topping over. Is that something that we could?
The trick is, we haul it down the street. Because we've talked about that, but they don't move their tree, they set it in one location, and it stays there during the, the whole season. We mount it to a sleigh, and then we have the horses pull it through the parade, and then it ends up at, down by the Marina.
Okay, so you couldn't make it, so you could dump it in that manhole after you, no? Okay.
Uh, we, we'd have to bring a crane and take it off the sleigh and, and affix it that way.
Okay.
The only time we've had trouble with the tree is during COVID, when we knew there wasn't gonna be a parade, we knew we weren't gonna haul it down the street. So we oversized it to try to make a spectacle of it, and the wind blew it over on Christmas Eve.
Okay, okay. Um, and then my next question, my last question is, the DPW gives a report every year, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I think that would be more beneficial to have the public come and listen to a DPW report than having an open house at the... report than having an open house at the DPW, because I think that's just gonna be a field day for attacks on the DPW of why you're not doing this, you did this wrong, you did this wrong. So, I think that it needs to be, uh, we could actually, um, publicize it more that the DPW give your report.
And if you have specific topics you would like me to cover, I'd be happy to do that. The other thing is, the DPW covers a lot of areas, so we do a separate utility, and then we do a separate DPW, and we, when we do the DPW, we don't hit much on the utilities, but we could even break it up even smaller if there was more that you wanted us to detail or talk about.
Okay. I just feel like if we did an open house at the DPW, and you took a half a day, two days later, it's gonna be, "Well, why didn't you get this done? Well, why didn't you get that done?" So, I think that that could be a-
Yeah, and another, another possibility, um, since I saw Mr. Pratt had brought that up before, is, you know, if there's a, a list of things that, that, that you all think that we need to educate people on, we can do little pieces of that through the Facebook page and kind of give some detail on that, um, and then, you know, help respond and, and help educate more.
Okay.
I just brought that up, because I know, I think, um, Councilmember Lundberg had you go down and talk to the residents at Lighthouse Land, and several of them said that was really beneficial. So, I, I think some of it is citizens just don't necessarily know.
Yeah.
So, I think it could be informational, but I think then, like, if a citizen had a concern about, like, the sidewalk plow, like, it might be beneficial for you to hear some of the concerns, too.
Well, the more information-
Kind of as being an attack as much as just information.
The more information we can get out to the public, the more we can help meet the